Make it bigger, man.
I know, right?
But no, I can go all the way along here.
I know.
You're always right about all the press. That's the way it works, right?
Don't, don't say me, I wouldn't care.
Exactly, that was working along the wall. Okay, I'm gonna run up to the double chair and I'm like, sure, and then I'll come back on the leg.
Oh. Thank you. But he just wants to make sure. The zoo, actually, the feed looks really nice.
Well, that's YouTube.
That's the YouTube feed right there, guys. I'm gonna start. We're only getting one, bud? You kind of have to record or know we're live on, uh, on YouTube. Counselor Duke, for just so you know, we're live on YouTube at the moment. We're not on Shaw yet, but we are live on YouTube.
Thanks, I see that.
We have a minute and a half.
Minute and a half until Shaw goes?
One minute?
A minute?
So we're dismissing Counselor Scott, it looks like to me.
That was my last count as well. Did you see Counselor Scott Madison? Yes, he's, uh, he's on.
I'm just trying to fix my settings really quickly to change my name. Never mind, someone did it, thank you.
We're live with Shaw.
So Counsel, I understand our meeting is live, so I want to just thank our media and broadcasting partners for making the effort to work with us to, to get back out there. We appreciate it. We hope, we hope to be with you all in person soon. Um, but for now, this will have to do. I will ask the clerk to start the meeting, please.
Under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes. A motion by Counselors Bruni and Shoemaker resolves that minutes of regular council meeting of April 27, 2020 be approved.
All in favor? Carry.
And under Agenda Item 3, Declaration of Secundary Interest. Counselor Shoemaker has declared a secundary interest with respect to item, Agenda Item 6.7 and the associated bylaw at 11.1.1 as the owner of the property is a client of the law firm. And Agenda Item 6.9 and the associated bylaw 11.1.5 as the contractor that is awarded the contract is a client of the law firm.
Any other counselors with conflicts? Seeing none?
Under Agenda Item 4, a motion by Counselors Nero and Hilssinger resolves that the agenda for May 11, 2020 city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? Motion's carried.
And under Proclamations and Delegations, Agenda Item 5.1, Museum Month.
Okay, so are we, we have Kathy Fisher on the line. Is that because she was gonna speak to this? Am I just reading the proclamation, Madam Clerk?
Kathy Fisher is available to answer questions either with respect to, um, the proclamation, the, um, attachment, uh, for the Chakora incident. And she's also, uh, got a report under Agenda Item 7.8.1. So she is on to answer any questions with respect to any of those.
Okay, well, I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation, then I'll briefly touch on the Chakora incident, and then we can move on if anybody doesn't have questions with Kathy. So whereas throughout our community, museums, art galleries, inherited sites, reflect our local history and culture and contribute to our economy by welcoming visitors and tourists to our community. And the 700 museums in Ontario contribute to 19.4 million overall visits and 38,000 school visits annually. This is made possible by 35,500 volunteers across the province. Whereas this month provides an opportunity to increase awareness of our community's museums and celebrate the contributions of these institutions to make the quality of life, education, and economic development. Whereas these museums, galleries, inherited sites are valuable resources for education and learning along with serving and as important community hubs. Whereas May 18, 2020 is International Museums Day. To celebrate museums that make their communities distinct and vibrant places to live, work, visit, and invest. Now therefore, I, Mayor Christian Probst, am due hereby proclaim May 2020 as May is Museum Month. And encourage all residents and tourists to digitally visit our local museums through their websites and their social media. When it is safe to reopen, we will see your museums across our community and our province. So today, interestingly, is actually to the date, the 150th anniversary of the Chakora incident. So it happened on May 11, 1870. Sure, the Chakora incident occurred in May of 1870 when a British-led Canadian Expeditionary Force attempted to use the American lock system at Sioux St. Marie to transport military supplies and personnel through the Great Lakes. The purpose of the Expeditionary Force was to put an end to the Red River Resistance and capture Lou Real. The United States refused to allow the transportation of military supplies and soldiers through their locks. On May 11, 1870, the Expeditionary Force was forced to portage around the locks and the SS Chakora passing through the locks with no supplies or military personnel onboard. Colonel Woolsey stayed at the Irmiting or Old Stone House and his troops camp on the lawn. This is one of the reasons the house is designated as a national historic site. And the incident led eventually to the building of the Canadian locks in 1895. That was 150 years ago today. So, uh, we, we can move on unless counselors have questions of Kathy about the proclamation or the incident. Seeing none, we can go to, uh, the consent agenda. Matters on the consent agenda. Counselor Gardi, we'll start with you.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna start, I got a few, I'd like to start with 6.1 if I could, please.
Yeah. So yeah, before you start, just for the, the rest of you folks who have your hands up, if I nod, I'm like, I've taken, I'm making a list here, I've taken it down. So just so you're aware, I've got Counselor Bruni, I've got Counselor Vezewall, and I have Counselor Christian, I have Counselor Scott so far. Okay? Okay, go, go ahead, Counselor Gardi.
Thanks, thanks, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, 6.1 through you, I believe, to Mr. White. Uh, Mr. White, um, couple of questions about the capital projects, uh, moving forward. I know there's some dialogue about, uh, what we should or should not be doing moving forward. I'd like some clarification, please. Um, my first question is, what projects do we have, um, plans to move forward with right now? Where we are, where we're applying to spend, uh, significant dollars? Are they predominantly, uh, roads and other infrastructure and the like?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gardi. Certainly, the, uh, projects, uh, that are road sewers and linear infrastructure, uh, have been approved by council and are moving forward to tender. You've had three of them tendered so far. Uh, however, those tenders do come back to you for awarding. So you would still have a decision point on, uh, those projects even though they've, uh, the initial capital budget has been approved for them. For other projects, that's the Twin Pad Arena project and others, those still have, uh, decision points to go through to come back to council. And, uh, really, anything that you haven't approved to tender for yet would still be subject to your approval.
Thank you. Um, Miss, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Malcolm, is it just a couple of follow-ups? One is, would you be able to provide a couple of examples, you or Mr. Girardi or Ms. Hamilton Beach, of a couple of these infrastructure projects? Please?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, Counselor Gardi. Uh, certainly, you've had, uh, two that you've awarded already. That's the Second Avenue Reconstruction and the Sixth Avenue Reconstruction. You have another one on your agenda tonight, the Farwell Terrace Aqueduct, uh, project. The other ones that we, uh, have out to tender right now, the West End Water Treatment Plant, uh, that will be coming to you, uh, at a future council meeting, likely the next one. And, uh, Northern Avenue Resurfacing Project, which is included in all our resurfacing. Both of those will be tendered in May. And as councils likely aware, it was announced today by our MPP that we have received approval for the Connecting Link Funding for the, uh, trunk road connecting link, which is, uh, 90% provincially funded. Uh, so that, uh, project would be coming back to you as well.
Great, which is, uh, really good news. Mr. Mayor, do we have time for comment now, or are we just doing, uh, questions?
Let's just go, let's just get all the questions out of the way on 6.1, and then if there needs comment, we'll come back around. So anybody else have any questions on 6.1? Counselor Christian?
Oh, hang on.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my question is, uh, through you to Mr. White. The, the capital project report is pretty straightforward. The thing that caught my eye was the Twin Pad Arena. You kind of answered one of my questions would, which was the timeframe and the design and planning stages. Obviously, we've got a long way to go. My, my real question here is, have we heard definitively from the senior levels of government regarding funding for this project? Or are we just hearing, uh, general information about potential funding for projects coming out of the pandemic situation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Quest, uh, Counselor Christian. We have not heard anything definitively. Really, the Connecting Link Funding was the first definite, uh, approval we've heard. We have, uh, been given understanding that once the time is right, uh, the, uh, federal and provincial governments will be looking to provide funding for stimulus-type projects to get the economy running again. They will naturally look towards projects that already have funding applications in and therefore are, uh, fairly shovel-ready. The Twin Pad Arena is one of those projects that the funding applications are in. Uh, but we have not heard anything definitively yet.
Um, then can I ask through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. White, uh, timelines as far as when we think we're actually going to be shovel-ready, given normal timelines, normal planning process? Any idea?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. For the Twin Pad project, we are getting fairly close to shovel-ready. Uh, certainly, the Twin Pad Arena Committee has been working and refining the design and getting more cost information. Um, and so, uh, we're certainly getting to the point.
Right. So my, my final question on this would be, uh, defining shovel-ready, we would have the drawings, design, everything in place, costing, and final approval from the, from city council. Is, is that shovel-ready?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. That would certainly completely meet the definition of shovel-ready. Uh, in reality, in reality, as long as we are somewhat close to that point and can proceed fairly quickly, uh, the, I'm sure the, uh, federal and provincial governments would consider it shovel-ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, on 6.1, anybody else on 6.1? Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just on this, uh, report, Mr. White, if we proceed with items like the, um, like the Twin Pad, I realize we're not quite at shovel-ready yet, but if we continue to proceed down that road, is it our hope that this would, um, assist in the economic recovery of the city? Of, of, you know, local businesses, local contractors, and, and keep the economy moving once we're out of the COVID, uh, pandemic?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. Yes, that is our hope. Uh, often in times like these where the, uh, senior levels of government need to provide stimulus funding to get the economy going, it's generally public sector projects that proceed first because they're able to and because the private sector, uh, has been impacted and is less, uh, able in many cases to, uh, uh, proceed with development that they had planned on doing. So the influx of, uh, funding into public sector projects allows the construction industry and the local trades, uh, industry to remain healthy while the private, the ability of the private sector to, uh, develop and, uh, invest in, uh, new construction catches up.
Yeah, perfect, thanks. And with respect to the Twin Pad specifically, um, what is the, I realize that the McMeekin is far beyond its lifespan, but, uh, I suppose, would it be fair to say we're only one kind of catastrophic incident away from that, uh, coming offline as a usable rink?
I don't even.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, sorry, Malcolm, you answer, and then I have one comment on that.
Okay. Through you, uh, Ca, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. Uh, yes, I think, uh, that certainly the community is well aware that the current McMeekin Arena is, uh, is on its last legs and, uh, very close to end of life.
Counselor Shoemaker, all I would add is I don't think we're one catastrophic, catastrophic event away from that being offline. I think we're one event away from that being offline. You know, we're, I, I toured it, uh, a few months ago, uh, with, uh, Minister MacLeod, who's responsible for the portfolio that would be funding that project. And, uh, the staff is really holding that place together with bits and pieces. So, you know, we could lose that facility very quickly. And just to point to the, our capital projects, uh, you know, our approach is, is, is pretty conservative. And a lot of the projects we're looking at are, um, you know, uh, either a necessity or close to a necessity. I wouldn't suggest a rink is a necessity, but the roads are a necessity. Uh, the, the, obviously, the, the treatment plants are a necessity. Um, and there are a lot of people in our community that would be of the opinion that, that, you know, the, the rink is close to a necessity because, you know, we have ice time capacity issues. So, so, you know, I think that they're all responsible projects. And, you know, we're gonna keep moving them along, and the council has decision points down the road. And at that decision point, if council doesn't think it's advisable to go forward with something, well, then we, we wouldn't. Uh, but, you know, uh, as you're aware, the McMeekin is beyond, frankly, I think what you could say is its last leg.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, that was kind of the thrust of, of my comments, I did have some. Uh, but just that, you know, it, it's in times like these that governments, uh, and, and you see governments of all stripes stepping up to, uh, spur the economy, the, because the, the rates are low, because, uh, we have the ability to do so more than the private sector. And that, in fact, will, um, I would say, benefit our budget in future years more than eliminating these projects would.
Okay, so I have, uh, Counselor, Counselor Shoemaker, were you done your questions on 6.1?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Hollingsworth, do you have something on 6.1? I have you too, Counsel Bruni.
Yes, I do. Um, through you, Mayor, to, uh, Mr. White. Just, um, for clarification, you, um, talked about, we all talked about the capital projects. And for clarification, I think that you mentioned to me, um, that on May the 25th, our next council meeting, we'll be revisiting capital projects and non-capital projects as well to get a overall bigger picture of our financial, potential financial, um, expenses.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Yes, it is our intent that the next meeting, May 25th, we will have, uh, much more in-depth, uh, information for you as to how we're going budget year-to-date, uh, as well as the, uh, financial impacts of the pandemic. And, uh, to the best of our ability, our, uh, intentions on going forward. Uh, as everyone is aware, it's a bit of a fluid situation. And, uh, as the province now is slowly making less restrictions on what's happening, we have to see how things respond with the virus.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, just like every other council member, I'm concerned about our capital projects, but also we need to look at our non-capital projects to give us a better overall picture. Thank you, and I look forward to, uh, more information on May 25th on our finances to make better decisions. Thank you.
Counsel Bruni? So we, Counsel Bruni, you're not off mute yet, so if we can get Counsel Bruni, uh, Counsel Bruni, uh, his mute lifted, uh, please, clerk, and then we could, there you go. Go ahead, Counsel Bruni.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, I believe it should go to Mr. Elliott. It's regarding the miscellaneous, uh, paving and resurfacing. The tender goes out in May. Uh, my, uh, couple of questions regarding, what is the budget for that? And do we have a list of what is being resurfacing? Uh, because those are probably bigger jobs in the miscellaneous paving.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. Uh, we're putting together the resurfacing program, uh, this week. We hope to bring a potential plan in, uh, at the May 25th meeting. Uh, we're a bit behind on that because of the situation we're in. The funding is very low. Typically, we get some of the, uh, operating surplus, and that's not available this year. The budget right now is around 500,000. We are hoping to use, um, some, uh, some of the under-run money that we have seen on some of the tenders we've closed already this year. So you will see a resurfacing program, uh, on the agenda for the 25th. That's, that's my intention.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is a lot less than last year, the 500,000?
Mr. Mayor, to, uh, Counsel Bruni, the 500,000 is, uh, the approximate amount of money in the miscellaneous, uh, budget. Uh, I would also note, uh, that you, we are doing Northern Avenue this year, which is really, uh, mostly a resurfacing project. And that's gonna take, uh, most of the, if not all, of the 3 million that we've set aside for resurfacing in the capital budget. So the 500 that you see is, uh, that we have now is, 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 uh, essentially from the miscellaneous construction budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else on 6.1? Okay, Counselor Gardi, I'm gonna end with you, because I didn't let you comment at the beginning of this, and, and you're on the consent agenda now. So you can have, you can have a brief comment before you move on to the next item.
Yeah, briefly, you know, I just think it's important that moving forward, a couple of things. One, we recognize that the bulk of the effort of the corporation over the course of the first number of weeks was that of making sure our community was healthy and as safe as it could be. And I think we've done, they've done an admirable job. I think every, all, all partner organizations and agencies have done really well. Um, I think it's only been the last 10 to 12, 14 days where we've had the opportunity to turn a corner a bit and to start looking at the financial situation. I think moving forward, it's important that we as a community join other communities. Um, I believe that, uh, that we should be advocating for bulk funding from Ottawa, uh, especially to cover both operating losses that we may, uh, we see during the pandemic and to allow, uh, us to use discretion to fund, uh, local construction projects, uh, during recovery period. I think it's important, and I just wanted to, uh, put that on the record. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. What's the next item you're on to consent here?
Uh, 6.2, please.
Go ahead.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to, I believe, Mr. Anderson, in regards to the, the MGM Media Licensing Agreement. It's a pretty, uh, cool effort. I was hoping Mr. Anderson could just, uh, provide a little information, uh, for the public, and then I might have a question or so.
Mr. Anderson?
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, through you, to, uh, Counselor Gardi. Um, yeah, this is, uh, I think, uh, a very exciting, uh, opportunity for us. We're, uh, obviously mindful of, uh, all the work and efforts that, uh, our staff have put into, to trying to attract, uh, films, uh, to Sioux St. Marie, and we had a number lined up, uh, for this, uh, this summer and, and throughout the fall that we were excited to host. Unfortunately, some of those have been delayed, um, you know, as a result of the global pandemic. But, uh, we are, um, still receiving a significant amount of interest, uh, from producers, uh, um, location scouts, uh, and others in the film industry, um, over the, over this, uh, this period, inquiring about Sioux St. Marie and its suitability for filming. Um, what we'd like to do with this particular clip is, uh, we thought, uh, our film and digital, film television and digital media coordinator, um, Jennifer Matthews, in assembling, uh, video clips to, uh, create some more promotional videos that we can utilize, uh, to market Sioux St. Marie to some of these groups. Um, we're still very hopeful that, uh, we'll be able to salvage some of the filming, uh, perhaps later this year, once we're, uh, allowed to do so. And we think that there's still a great opportunity to attract, uh, more companies here in the future to film.
Counselor Gardi?
Yeah, great. Um, just Travis, I was just wondering, uh, Mr. Anderson, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Anderson. Have you heard, I've, I've read a bit about, um, coming out of the pandemic, you know, if we are in, in the latter part of the summer or fall, at least transitioning to coming out, that, uh, there might be a lot of production houses and companies, uh, looking for, uh, studio space and other locales outside of the GTA or some traditional filming areas to kind of catch up, if you will. Uh, is that, have you heard any rumors or, uh, information in around that? That might present a.
Yeah. Sorry to, uh, sorry to cut you off there. Um, absolutely, uh, we've heard a, a lot of inquiries about that. Uh, I think, leading up to, uh, the pandemic, there was already a shortage of, uh, studio space. Um, certainly, uh, over this period, people are consuming a, a huge amount of content. Um, and we know that, uh, you know, the, the desire for content is, isn't gonna go away after, uh, the COVID restrictions are lifted. Um, so that's definitely, uh, you know, uh, there, there is strong demand there, and it is something that we've been trying to examine partnerships and other, uh, you know, reaching out to other groups that may be interested in potentially considering Sioux St. Marie as a location for studio. The fair amount of, uh, capital, uh, investment that's, that's required there, which is a bit of a challenge. But, uh, we continue to, uh, pursue those conversations.
Yeah, and I just, you know, and, and it's great, I think it's a great effort. I think considering, you know, Netflix over the last couple of years have invested 15 to 17 billion dollars, uh, um, respectfully, and Apple and, and Prime and other, uh, 10 or 12 billion in streaming and content. Um, it, it'd be, it would be almost, uh, derelict for us not to pursue some of these opportunities, considering, uh, uh, the investment we've put in, uh, over the course of the last several years in, in this area. So, uh, thanks, Mr. Anderson, I appreciate it.
Okay, so I have on this same, on 6.2, I have Counselor Hollingsworth, and then Counselor Scott, and then Counselor Vezewall. So Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Uh, through you, Mayor, um, again to Mr. Travis Anderson. Um, first of all, I'm thrilled to see that, um, you've been working very hard on this particular, um, industry. So, um, well done. Um, just two quick questions. Um, I find our staff, including you, Mr. Anderson, is very good at, uh, finding money and going after grants and filling out those applications for successful grants. Um, going along this, to your knowledge, are there any out there that you have already applied for or in the process of applying for that can boost up our movie industry? Um, I know that, uh, the movie industry is always looking for a certain infrastructure. And I know as a city, we have started towards that working partnership with Sioux College. But, um, right now, have you heard of any grants? And also, um, are there any other parts of the movie industry infrastructure that we need to focus on to help, um, build our industry and grow our industry?
Uh, to answer your, your first question, um, throughout the, uh, I guess, the announcements relative, related to, uh, stimulus funding, we haven't seen anything specific to Northern Ontario Film. We do know that the, the province is actively working on, uh, a film recovery strategy, and they thought, uh, a working group assembled that will be, uh, uh, providing guidance and assisting with, by providing some industry expertise in that regard. Uh, it is something that we continue to monitor. That being said, I think that, um, you know, particularly, uh, in terms of attracting film to the north, any subsequent funding or any additional funding that NOHFC is able to, uh, to obtain and provide, will, will go a long way. And we are hopeful that they will, uh, you know, resume their, their application process shortly here and hopefully approve, uh, some more film, for filming in St. Marie. The second part of your question, uh, related to infrastructure, um, you know, that is, uh, ongoing dialogue. You know, I think we, we certainly recognize that there's strong growth in the animation sector. We've had some preliminary conversations with our post-secondary institutions. You know, it's, it's a bit of a, uh, challenging situation because we do need the labor force to support some of those. So we are trying to, you know, enter into some, some conversations, uh, at this stage, quite, uh, quite early on about, uh, you know, what other offerings they could offer, uh, either in the film program or even in the gaming program at Algoma U, uh, to try to entice some of those, uh, those companies here. And then Jennifer Matthews has consistently been looking at, uh, partnerships for studio space and, and, um, you know, appropriate infrastructure for that. But, uh, as mentioned, that's, that's a bit of a, a heavy capital request there. So it's a matter of trying to find the right partner that's interested in investing in St. Marie.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry, uh, just unmuting myself there. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Anderson. Actually, I have a question about this, I never thought about it, uh, prior, otherwise I would have reached out to you. So the marketing material is obviously focused at attracting, um, film industry here. But does this license, like, would we be able to use this for potentially like tourism? I'm not sure what the footage includes, but if it shows off some of our finer points of, of being naturally gifted, then maybe we could look at that, um, for, for tourism as well. Post-COVID, we may want to, may want to improve or boost our tourism marketing, given that it might be a tough world out there. But, um, I'll leave the rest to you. That was basically, basically my question was, could it be used in other areas beyond just film?
So we, we agreed that we would, uh, run by the final footage, um, through MGM once, once compiled. Uh, you know, I think there's a fair amount of flexibility in terms of exactly how we utilize it. The content itself is, uh, not necessarily applicable to tourism, but definitely, uh, of great use for us. So, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And, uh, I guess just further to that comment, uh, you know, we are, we are moving forward with some, some of our marketing materials, uh, on tourism, independent of this video, that will be released, uh, you know, as soon as, uh, the time is right. So we're hoping to release some of that, uh, promotional material shortly here.
Great, that was everything, thank you.
Council Vezel Allen?
Thank you, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson, my questions directly relate to, um, Schedule A, which is under the, the bylaw portion. So, um, looking at Schedule A, number one, the user, user, which is us, the corporation of the City of St. Marie, um, we cannot use the license on any third party to use, reproduce, exploit, distribute, exhibit, broadcast. So, third party, so from my understanding with, uh, Appendix A, so we as the corporation of the city can use that clip, but say if one of our partners, such as, you know, Economic Development Corporation, Innovation Center, um, any other, you know, St. Marie Museum, Bush Plain. So, from my understanding is we are restricted as just us using that clip, is that correct?
That, that is my understanding as well. You know, I could speak a, a second opinion from, from legal on that, but my understanding is that the, the agreement is relevant to the party entering it, which is, uh, um, City of St. Marie directly.
Okay, and then my only other question is just, I know that we're, we're, we don't have to pay for the license, which is, um, definitely a savings, but the user shall pay all laboratory and all other costs and expenses in making the clip available. So do you have an idea as to what that will be in terms of costs?
My understanding is that, that would be the cost for us to develop the, the video and, and make it available. We've been, uh, in dialogue with MGM, uh, we've assumed that there are no fees associated with, with obtaining this clip. So any other additional cost would be our own cost, uh, related to, uh, developing our, our own promotional video.
Okay, so we're not paying any production costs for the clip to MGM?
That is, uh, my understanding, that is correct.
Because it's worded a little differently, um, if you take a look at, at Schedule A, under the bylaw. User shall pay all laboratory and all other costs and expenses that may be incurred by MGM and making the film clip available to user.
Mm-hmm, I, I'll double check.
So I, I translate that as, they're making the clip available to us, and we're not paying the licensing, but we're going to be paying the production.
Yeah, and I, I will, uh, have to quadruple check with, uh, Ms. Matthews, and but my understanding is that, uh, they've agreed to waive all fees, uh, for this. And, and I can confirm, uh, I just received a text message from her that, uh, there is zero processing fees, uh, being applied to this.
In, in, in any, in any event, Travis, maybe I can save you some time here. If MGM was to turn around and try and charge us production costs for making the Vikings, we wouldn't be paying any of those.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, we, we, if that, if that in turn is what we had to do to use this clip, we wouldn't be using. Did you have anything else there? Did you have any now, Council Vezel Allen?
That is it on 6.2?
Anybody else have anything on 6.2? No, Council Gardi, do you have anything left on consent?
A couple more, I'll be quick. 6.4, uh, the Kinsman Center Development Agreement, to, through you to Mr. Anderson, please.
Yeah, go ahead. Anybody else, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, can you just give a brief rundown of, uh, what we're looking at here with the Kinsman Center? And then I have a couple of follow-ups.
Certainly, um, we've been in conversation with, uh, the Kinsman Club, Two Finish Nordic Ski Club, uh, and the Two Cycling Club for, uh, a number of years now, well, about 18 months to 24 months. With respect to, um, supporting the development of a, a, a new Kinsman Center facility. The Kinsman Center, uh, for those of you that, uh, are familiar with it, you know, is a real pinnacle of, of, uh, of the community in terms of, uh, you know, what it, what it provides for access to, uh, Kinsman Park and a number of the community events that are held out there. You know, on an annual basis, uh, it's not uncommon for it to support, uh, elementary school across-country running races, uh, regular field trips, um, you know, university athletics with, uh, Algoma U, as well as supporting any, uh, mountain biking or cycling events that occur at that location, as well as just generally, uh, you know, a great asset in terms of, uh, community use. I know in particular over this period with, with respect to COVID-19, while the park, uh, itself was shut down for a period, uh, you know, we've often received comments or, uh, you know, feedback that, uh, having such a beautiful asset where people are able to socially distance and, uh, really take advantage of, uh, the natural beauty of, of the Algoma Highlands and St. Marie, has been instrumental in terms of, uh, mental health and, uh, just wellness, uh, as a whole. So, uh, the current issue with the, uh, facility is that, uh, it can only house about 64, um, people, uh, at one time. That's been a, uh, a restriction, both in terms of, uh, you know, as mentioned, when, when there were, uh, elementary, uh, school running races this past fall. You know, the kids were forced, uh, it was a rainy day, so they were forced to hang out in buses, uh, because there wasn't sufficient space, space inside the facility. It's also, uh, on a long-term basis, uh, impeding the growth of the, uh, Jack Rabbit Ski Program. So right now, they're limited at 170 youth, uh, and each year they have, uh, requests for much more than that, that they're forced to turn down. In addition to that, uh, we would like to host some, uh, provincial and national events. And, um, you know, I think to the, uh, the current state of the facility, uh, limits our ability to do so. So we see this as a, as a great asset, it's definitely something that's featured heavily in our community promotion. We do have an article coming up, uh, recently, uh, you know, highlighting the, uh, outdoor, um, benefits of living in St. Marie, um, you know, where, where it figures quite prominently as well, the Kinsman Mark and Iowa, the Highlands area. And I certainly think, coming out of the COVID-19 crisis, uh, you know, as people in larger urban centers are looking for ways to, uh, perhaps, uh, press reset on their lifestyle and move to smaller, uh, more rural settings with, uh, you know, ample outdoor experiences, that this, uh, this park, um, can play a, a flagship component in attracting those people here. So, the, um, what we've worked out is, uh, a partnership between, uh, at this stage, with, uh, Kinsman Club of St. Marie, Two Finish Ski Club, and the Two Cycling Club to look at a feasibility study to assess the viability of the increasing lodge capacity. We are also in discussion with some other partners, but, uh, uh, you know, about their use of the facility. But at this point in time, it's, it's officially with those three groups at this point.
Thanks, uh, quickly, Travis, just if we were specifically to look at, uh, mountain biking. What, what kind of economic impact does mountain biking have in North America or Canada? And can you cite maybe a couple of examples or remind us of some examples you've talked about to us in the past of communities that are really capitalizing on, uh, this, this infrastructure?
Sure, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Council Gardi. Yeah, definitely, within Ontario, we're seeing, uh, cycling tourism, uh, generate about 517 million, uh, on an annual basis. You know, there's local examples here where we held, uh, the Crank the Shield event that brought in about, uh, 500,000, uh, locally here. In addition to that, there's some pretty significant trail networks, uh, around Lake Superior, both in Marquette, just, uh, to the southwest of us, uh, that's bringing in close to, uh, $5 million annually, uh, in terms of the number of tourists that they're, they're generating. And then, uh, much larger trail systems, um, the Kingdom Trail Network in Vermont, uh, which is roughly about 100 miles of, uh, of mountain bike trails. You know, they see over 120, uh, close to 120,000, uh, travelers each year utilize those trails. And I believe the community contribution, uh, net positive economic benefit is upwards of 10 million. So there's some pretty substantial, uh, um, economic benefits for, uh, for these types of facilities and, and trail networks.
So I, I, I'd agree with, with Travis's comments about when we're coming out of, when we're coming out of this situation, eventually with COVID-19, I think we have to think boldly. I think that we, in St. Marie and the surrounding area, can develop ourselves into a leader in this sector of tourism, this investment, this feasibility study will go a long way. I think there's opportunities around Nordic skiing, mountain biking, and trail running, and, uh, we should be at the forefront of that over the course of the next few years. So, uh, good work again, Travis, thanks.
Hey, so I got Council Scott next on this. So I have a list, if you put your hands up, I've, I've recorded you. I've recorded, everybody's put their hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just have a couple of questions, uh, I think these will be directed to Mr. Anderson. So, uh, just as, as a quick example, you touched on the, uh, oh, I forget what it's called, the one, the shield one in particular, I forget the name, it's escaping me right now.
Crank the Shield.
That's it, yes, thank you, makes sense because it's biking. We also, we did actually have a provincial, uh, event here, you know, with the OUA Provincial Nordic Skiing. Do you know how that went? Did, did the, the lack of space impact that event at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, Council Scott. I can say that, uh, yes, they did have to bring in, uh, trailers for that event. So they had trailers, uh, adjacent to the Kinsman Center, uh, that they were able to warm up, uh, um, you know, during that event. So, you know, I think definitely as we're assessing, um, you know, we're, we're hosting people to come to our community and, uh, you know, definitely want to leave them with a, a high quality impression of our community. You know, it's always a challenge when you're, you're forced to put, uh, people who perhaps for the very first time are, are coming to our community in trailers, or, or they're forced to warm up in, in buses, which was, uh, you know, a similar situation to when they held, uh, NOS across-country running this year. Uh, you know, a lot of the high school athletes that were in the community, um, you know, were, were hanging out on their buses, trying to stay warm in the fall.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of, uh, what I figured. I didn't, I didn't find a whole lot of information on, on the event, like pictures of, uh, of how the setup was, just pictures of the trails and stuff. Uh, my next question is, so, just, just for my own clarification, I, I'm not sure if this is where I would direct it, but this park, it's not city, it, it park, I guess, it's not city-owned, is it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Scott. No, it is not. The park itself is, is owned by, uh, the Kinsman Club of St. Marie. There's adjacent land to it, uh, on the Crystal Creek system, which is owned by the St. Marie Regional Conservation Authority, as well as the, uh, the Pinder system as well. And then, uh, the Red Pine system is a combination of, uh, Conservation Authority land, as well as, uh, uh, Ministry of Natural Resources, I believe.
And so then, I guess, the big question that I have there is, it's not, did they approach us? Like, is this something that they approached us because they can't afford it? So it's kind of like they're reaching out to the city to, to help pay for a feasibility study, uh, for their, their private property, I guess?
There are, uh, initially, yes, they did approach us. I think there was, uh, a number of issues to, uh, to address in terms of the partnerships, and looking for the city's support to align some of these partnerships, as well as there may be the potential, uh, I guess, one of the property owners that I forgot to mention is, Two Finish Nordic Ski Club does own about an acre of land where their blue facility is right now. So there could be some alignment, uh, related to, uh, co-locating on, on various properties. The, uh, initial request at this point was, uh, given the large number of users that we were trying to, uh, user groups that we were trying to combine together, we felt that it might be in the best interest for the city, um, and we had earmarked funds for this, through Future St. Marie, to undertake the, the feasibility study. And then, once we get to a position where there's a determination made as to whether or not, um, you know, should the feasibility study prove, uh, prove that it is justified to move forward with construction, that those partners would come to the table for the capital request for that new facility.
And are there any other avenues that, that we could reach out on in this? Or is this something, it's just going to be strictly through Future SSM? And I have a follow-up question as well, but like, are there any associated grants or anything that you could find that would, that would help cover a feasibility study? Maybe not, maybe it'd be more capital grants, but?
Uh, there weren't any that were apparent right at this moment. We could look at, uh, you know, provincial or, or federal funding for that. I think part of the intent of, of trying to move this forward, particularly at this point, was, again, trying to advance some projects so that in, in the event that there is some, uh, stimulus funding available later this year, that, uh, at least some of the feasibility and conceptual designs were, uh, ready and available for those grants, uh, should some stimulus funding be available that would fit the, uh, fit the mix for this project, so to speak.
And just final question, this might not be necessarily, uh, for you, Mr. Anderson, it could be to Mr. Mayor, whoever could answer it, you probably know. So you said that there's some funds earmarked for this sort of stuff with Future SSM. Uh, how much is in that funding pool, for example? Like, how much is this 60,000 going to take up?
We've got a fair amount of, uh, funding still available through Future St. Marie for, for other projects. So we don't believe at this point that this would take away from any of the other longer-term projects that we've been working on. We had, uh, specifically earmarked, uh, a portion of funds for recreational projects, based on quality-of-life initiatives, and, uh, we're still leaving some, some funds available, uh, under that particular line item, plus we saw the additional funds available for the other projects that we want to take on.
And sorry, I just thought of another one as well. So given that, uh, Algoma University's Nordic Ski Team has used it, provided this goes forward to a next step, would, would they be one of the partners that we bring to the table? I know that you mentioned the Two Finish Nordic Ski Club, but what about Algoma University as well? Give it, uh, considering that we did the OUAs here?
Uh, certainly, they'll be a group that we continue to, uh, dialogue with going forward.
Great, that was everything I had, thank you.
Yeah, I have Council Christian next on my list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had four questions. Council Scott asked three of them, I have one follow-up question for Mr. Anderson. Travis, thank you for the, uh,
Travis, thank you for the report. I just want to be clear. The feasibility study is primarily going to focus on building infrastructure? Or will there also be feasibility on including the trail system and, you know, that part of it? I just want to be clear. I mean, it's fuzzy on that.
The specific feasibility study for the Kinsman Center would be specific to that actual facility. We are doing some additional work on trails through the Trail Master Plan, specific to the mountain bike development. And that was through the funding that we received in combination from Fednor and the municipality. We are not proposing at this stage in the game to look at any additional work on the cross-country ski trails themselves. And we'll focus primarily on the facility itself at this point.
One follow-up question to Mr. Anderson through you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned in the report that 300 attendees is sort of like the goal. Why is, could you explain with 300, why 300 is a threshold that we should be striving for? Is that usually a number that provincial and national events look for, the 300 attendee capacity?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian. It was the information that we were supplied, you know, in terms of most likely sized events for whether it's Ontario Cups for cross-country skiing, that the lodge would be able to accommodate, as well as a pretty, you know, in the summertime, if the mountain bike events are larger, we know we'll have a flux of people in and outside of the lodge. And then for a number of the cross-country running events, it was, you know, perceived to be the sweet spot in terms of size of event. You know, that will be another number that we refine as part of the feasibility. But it seemed to be a good starting point for the work that we were hoping to do.
Thank you. I think this project, if the feasibility pans out, something that we should be supporting as a community, that is a real asset up there. It's a beautiful area and we should be taking advantage of it. If the city could help through Future Sioux St. Marie, I'm all for it. My only caution or hope is that because it's owned by Kinsmen in the area and the trail system has multiple partners, that should we decide to move forward with this, that everybody be involved in the financing of it. Because I do think it is an excellent project for Sioux St. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Christian. Councillor Vezel Allen.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Anderson. Regarding the partners, so I understand the concept that you want to take the existing facility and create a new expanded facility that would be owned by the Kinsman Club of Sioux St. Marie. So that will be the sole owner. Regarding that, there is, so the Sioux Finish Nordic Ski Club obviously supports that center through the Hiawatha Highlands, which Hiawatha Highlands is a division of the Sioux Finish Nordic Ski Club and operates as a nonprofit. So my question to you is, in looking at the expansion of that facility, which is, you know, widely used, I would say mostly by Hiawatha Highlands and the, you know, selling the cross-country ski passes and having the, you know, the jackrabbits and, you know, having, you know, kids go there and the Nordic racers from Algo Me U. Is there an MOU in place with the Kinsman Club and the Sioux Finish Nordic Ski Club that you're aware of, Mr. Anderson?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezel Allen. Yes, I am aware of an MOU that does exist between the Sioux Finish Nordic Ski Club and the Kinsman Center with respect to utilization of the existing Kinsman Center and a number of other managerial and operational aspects.
And are you aware if they've looked at other sources to pay for the feasibility study? I know the Community Development Corporation, it is a loan. But they will give a loan to corporations and organizations for strategic planning and business planning as well. Ontario Trillium Foundation will give during the granting periods money for planning. So do you know if they've exhausted that or if they're just not willing to take a loan? Because the CDC is alone.
I do know that they have spent some of their own dollars, and in particular the Sioux Finish Nordic Ski Club, in terms of doing some preliminary work related to a feasibility study. And, but I can't speak specifically whether or not they approach Trillium or some of these other entities out there for funding for this.
Okay. And just one final question in terms of the planning and putting out the RFQ. Is someone from Future SSM going to be involved in that vetting process and have input, especially if we are funding it?
Yes, that is the intent. We would assist with drafting the most likely RFP and, you know, using some of our resources here to assist with the review and management of that procurement process.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions on 6.4.
Okay, so councillor Shoemaker, do you have still got questions on 6.4? Councillor Shoemaker, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Christian touched on it a little bit, but just specifically through you to Mr. Anderson. Are the user groups that are listed in your report, the Algo Me U Nordic Ski Club, the Sioux Finish Ski Club and the Cycling Club, are they contributing to the feasibility study?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. At this point, as mentioned, we are proceeding, we've proceeded on the basis that we would bear the cost of the feasibility at this point and that because we were trying to compile a number of different user groups together and that should the feasibility determine that, you know, it is a sound investment to move forward with, that these groups would then be responsible for coming to the table with funds to support the capital investment for the project.
And just to that point, would they be expected to pay for the entire capital investment? Or would they be looking to the city or some other fund at that point to contribute to those capital expenditures?
My assumption would be that they would be looking to a variety of funding mechanisms to support this development. You know, much in the same way that we at the municipality oftentimes look to, you know, provincial or federal funding agencies to support this.
Okay, and with respect to, I think in your report, it says that the Kinsman Club will be the owner of the building. But if various groups are participating in the operation of it, or at least participating in the feasibility, and if various groups are contributing to the capital cost, providing that the feasibility says that it is warranted, how will access to the building be, you know, equally shared? Or how will it be doled out so that the Kinsmen couldn't, for example, use their ownership to, you know, take precedence over others for booking a facility?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. That is one of the key aspects that we will be looking at as part of the feasibility, the ownership structure and the management agreement related to the use of the facility. Certainly, at this point, you know, all parties have been able to come to mutual agreements in terms of how that facility is utilized and accessed. So one would expect that, you know, hopefully that goodwill continues into this new venture. But it is something that we intend to look at should the feasibility study proceed.
Thank you, yes. And with respect to, yeah, with respect to the ask, like councillor Christian, I think that's a gem for our community. You highlight that in your report. And I think that it's something that we should be developing further facilities, further activities out there to draw people to our community, because it really is a real asset for us.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Travis Anderson. A number of my questions were already answered, so I just have two quick ones. Just to reconfirm, the partners that you refer to, did you say that they're all not-for-profits and/or charity status?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. I unfortunately do not know the official response to that. I'm not sure what their official status is for all of these groups. I believe most are not-for-profit, but I can't specify specifically.
Okay. Just because maybe down the future, people might want to start donating and there could be a charity aspect. Second question. Is there, as everyone has said, yes, I agree, everyone says a gem, the whole area is a gem. It's perfect for our quality life strategy that you and your team and City Hall have been building towards. So here's my question. Is there a danger that one of these groups in the future may end up wanting, having to have to sell their land? Because it could be financially challenged. And if that is a possibility, there could be an impact to our whole quality of life strategy. Here we are promoting this wonderful area. And potentially, is there a danger that one of these partners may have to sell someday?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. Two items. One is the beauty of being on a Zoom call. The partners have texted me and have all confirmed that they are not-for-profit. The second is, you know, I certainly think that related to asset sales and properties, you know, I think that's something that could be worked out through some form of agreement once we get to that stage. Unfortunately, my thoughts don't carry through.
Travis, I just want to jump in here. I don't really think we should ask Travis to speculate on whether some of these agencies might have to kind of divest in the future. I think we're getting a little far down the road with these questioning about, you know, what it might look like in the future. That's the whole point of us doing the feasibility study. A common thread I've heard through this, I think most of us share it, is that that whole area, that asset, that facility, is an incredible gem for our community and something that we all believe we should build on. And frankly, I think that was largely the point of Future Sioux St. Marie is identifying, you know, some of our strengths and getting people to work together and getting people to come together and looking towards the future and picking some assets that we could really focus on and improve. And I think this is one of them, just for my part, I think this is completely consistent with what we're trying to accomplish. It's consistent with the Future Sioux St. Marie plan. I think it's great that we would be the agency bringing people together and looking at the feasibility of moving this project forward. So I commend Travis and his team for putting this before us. But I think we've got to kind of focus our questions more on like the here and now and not on what might happen in the future about with these agencies and their ability to manage this. Or I'm sure when we're through the feasibility process, if we are going to move forward, there will be some structure in there that relates to the partners and how they're going to relate to one another, how they're going to interact, and what might happen with the property in the future if someone does divest. But I think we're getting a little far afield here.
If I can just finish off my thought, I agree with you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that this wonderful area is protected now and in the future. So I just want to make sure conscious of that because it is absolutely a huge asset to our area for quality life. Thank you.
Councillor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question to Mr. Anderson, and it's a basic one. This feasibility study is strictly for the building. So it's basically a blueprint of the building, architectural drawings, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. Yes, it would include some conceptual designs, but it'll also look at the management structure and the business case for that facility. So, you know, some of the issues that were brought up related to use of the facility, also, you know, some of the financial statements related to the cost of operating that building and potential revenue streams to make sure that it is economically viable and sustainable will also be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in 6.4? Seeing nobody, councillor Gardy, are you done yet?
I'm not. I've got one more, sorry.
Okay, what is it?
It is 6.10, the ditching program 2020. So through you to Mrs. Susan Hamilton Beach, I believe, if she's on.
She is.
Great. Mrs. Hamilton Beach, there are a few areas in the West End that are a bit more susceptible to flooding than others. One of them is the area in and around Atwater and Chippewa and Amherst. The last couple of years, neighbors have complained about more poor drainage than others. And specifically last year, I believe it was, we had some issues in and around that area. And it wasn't for the ditches itself, but it was because of an area just southwest of those homes and streets relating to beaver dams. I'm just hoping, on behalf of those residents who asked me to ask this question, that moving forward over the summer, spring, summer and early autumn, if Public Works can keep an eye on that area for them, because they think things are working. But you realized last year that that seemed to be a big problem a couple of times.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Gardy. We will absolutely continue to monitor that area. And should extra effort be required, we will do our best to attend to it.
Thanks very much. Anybody else on ditching? Councillor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Hamilton Beach. I see the list of the, they're going to be done. Is that the actual order in which they're going to be done? And if not, will you be putting out a schedule either through the media or on our website so that as it progresses, people have an idea of where we're going to be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian. This is not the schedule. It will be prioritized and, and in all honesty, it is not a published list. Sometimes there are greater efficiencies if we do have crews in the area working on other projects that bring about a change in that schedule. So generally, there is notice provided to the residents affected, but it's not a published list per se.
Thank you very much. My priority is the East End. I just slipped that in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on ditching? Seeing none, we're done with councillor Gardy. Next on my list is councillor Bruni. Councillor Bruni, you had something on consent?
No, it's been asked already. Thank you.
Okay, so then I have councillor Vezel Allen.
I'm all good. All good. Nothing left.
On my list, I have councillor Christian.
All good.
And then I have councillor Dufour.
Yes, I have a question on item 6.9 through you, Mr. Mayor, to either Don Elliott or Mr. Rumiel. I see under financial implications that this job came in significantly under budget. I was just wondering if you could give us a sense of why that might be.
Okay, so we'll have Mr. Elliott answer that, please.
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour, we scaled that project down a little bit from the first time we did the budget. So it came in a lower, we asked the consultant to tell us what absolutely has to be done for this project. So we had over budgeted slightly for the project. And also, we're experiencing pretty low estimates these days, or tender values. That could be partly because of the price of oil. It could be other projects that contractors really seem to sharpen their pencils this year. So we are reaping the benefit of better prices. Those are probably the best answers I can give you at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elliott. It certainly seems like now is a very good time to be embarking on these capital projects. In your comments earlier, you mentioned the possibility of bringing a report to city council on May 25th, outlining some other priorities for capital works. What my question was is, Um, what my question was is, um, with this job being funded under aqueduct and bridge rehabilitation, will the funds saved here be, uh, reserved for other aqueduct and bridge jobs? Or would we be able to move those to miscellaneous construction if we so choose?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Doofor, some of it can probably, is, is probably general under the overall capital budget. So it can go to, uh, resurfacing, uh, miscellaneous projects. There may be some funds in here that are designated as urban only, which can only go to, uh, aqueducts or storm sewers, that kind of project.
Okay, and your, uh, report, uh, the next council meeting will, uh, certainly, uh, distinguish between both of those with, uh, exact numbers, I presume?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Doofor, yes, we're putting a report together for, uh, we call it the miscellaneous paving contract, which is primarily resurfacing, but we will be putting other projects in there such as the Albert Street, uh, Andrew intersection improvements. There will be a bit of bridge work in there that is very much road related. It's all related construction on several jobs, mostly resurfacing, that will be lumped together into one contract. And we hope to assign some of the underruns to that, uh, to that contract. So we're working with finance, we'll put a, a report together and, uh, seek council approval, uh, at that time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elliott. Looking forward to it.
Okay, anybody else in 6.9? Seeing none. Uh, Counselor Scott, you wanted to speak to 6.8?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, but actually I, I got that, uh, it was more of a question slash comment and I got it resolved, uh, offline, just for everyone to update. There was just a typo in one of the bylaws. Uh, I since clarified that it was, or will be corrected. Um, that, that was basically all I had, so the, I did communicate with that offline. Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else on the consent agenda, Counselor Scott, seeing as I'm at you?
Uh, no, no, I do not.
Does anybody else have anything on the consent agenda, Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6.6, Bay Street, uh, property acquisition?
Go ahead.
Um, are the, this is the, the area between Gore and Andrew, uh, and train stations being moved further west of there. Is the plan to remove the tracks from this area?
Uh, the CEO, are you going to speak to that, Mr. CEO?
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. Um, there are plans to remove those tracks, uh, but, uh, we're still in, uh, discussions with, uh, CN as to what, uh, the future of that property is.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else on 6.6? Anybody, anything else in consent, Counselor Shoemaker? Do you have anything left?
No, thank you.
Madam Clerk, I think that's it for the consent agenda.
And I have a motion by Counselors Bruni and Hillsinger, resolve that all items listed under date May 11, 2020. Agenda item six, consent agenda be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Motion's carried.
And under agenda item 7.8.1, the Historic Sites Board Annual Report, 29, 2019, Ermiter Clerk National Historic Site. A motion by Counselors Bruni and Hillsinger, resolve that the report of the curator, Ermiter Clerk National Historic Site, dated May 11, 2020, concerning Historic Sites Board Annual Report 2019 for the operations of the Ermiter Clerk National Historic Site, be received as information?
And. Yeah, do you have any questions on that, Counselor? I see no questions from the counselors, so you can vote on your e-scribe. All in favor? Motion's carried. Beecham, you can submit your respective vote. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, move off to bylaws. And as Counselor Scott had pointed out, there was a typo in bylaw 2020 dash, uh, 108, uh, just some wording that had been held over from a previous bylaw. That has been corrected and is corrected in your e-scribe. So I have a motion by Counselors Nero and Hillsinger, resolve that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date May 11, 2020, save and accept bylaws 92, 2020, 92 and 2021, 102 be approved?
All in favor? Thank you.
And bylaw 2020, 92, resolve that bylaw 2020, 92, being a bylaw to authorize the acquisition of a portion of property located at Civics 227, 231, 235, 239 and 243 East Balfour Street, be passed in open council this 11th day of May 2020, and that's open for voting?
All in favor? You can cast your vote in your e-scribe. I'd appreciate that.
Counselor Hollingsworth in the affirmative?
Uh, Counselor Hollingsworth's hand did go up.
Okay. And a motion by Counselors Nero and Hillsinger, resolve that bylaw 2020 dash 102, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a contract between the city and Avery Construction Limited for the reconstruction of Fairwell Terrace Aqueduct Repairers, contract 2020 dash 3E, be passed in open council this 11th day of May 2020?
All in favor? Thank you.
And that brings us to agenda item 14, a motion by Counselors Bruni and Shoemaker, resolve that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you, folks. Hopefully we'll be together in a couple of weeks. Everybody have a nice night.
Thank you. Take care, everybody.
Good night, everybody.